Good evening. Council met in executive session prior to this meeting. We discussed the following matters. Personnel, two routine personnel matters. Contract surl, Whisper Lake sewer easement and a potential telecommunications agreement. Legal update on utility condemnation case and advice on regarding agenda items. No vote was taken. In executive session, do I hear a motion to ratify this report?
So moved.
Councilman Carnes made the motion. Do I hear a second? Second. Councilman Michael Sackins, is there any discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. I would like to welcome everyone to the Town of Lexington Council Meeting. This meeting is being held at Town Hall, January 29, 2024. This meeting is being broadcast on the town's YouTube channel. I am Hazel Livingston, the mayor of the Town of Lexington, and I would like to introduce my fellow council members. To my left is Mayor Protem Ron Williams.
Good evening.
To his left is Councilmember Todd Laow.
Good evening.
To his left is Councilmember Jenny Michaels.
Good evening.
To my right is Councilmember Todd Carnes.
Good evening.
To his right is Councilmember Gavin Smith.
Good evening.
To his right is Councilmember Will Allen.
Good evening.
And at this time, I would like to welcome the Reverend Trevor Miller from Mount Hob Church for tonight's invocation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. My name is Trevor Miller, one of the pastors of Mount Hob, and it's an honor to be able to open this session in prayer tonight. So if you join me, let's pray together. Gracious and loving God, as we convene in this sacred space today for communal discourse, we humbly seek your guidance and your wisdom. Bless each participant with open hearts, minds that are receptive to empathy, and a commitment to the common good. May our discussions be grounded in respect, fostering an environment where diverse voices are not only heard but truly understood. Grant us the strength to navigate challenges with grace and the insight to discover innovative solutions for the good of others and for your glory. May unity prevail over discord, compassion over indifference. As we deliberate for the betterment of our wonderful town, instilling us the courage to act justly and the humility to acknowledge our collective responsibility. And by your grace and your mercy, may this meeting offer hope and light to create a town that follows the greatest commandment, to love you above all else and to love our neighbor as ourselves. Thank you for your love, God. It's in your name that we pray, and together everyone said. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you. I would like to welcome veteran Sharon Costner Peshar. Yes, ma'am. She's going to lead us in our pledge tonight. Explain from the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sharon, would you like to tell us a little bit about your service?
I'm here representing the Lexington County Veterans Group. I'm a retired Air Force Master Sergeant. Spent 22 years, all Air Force, OEF, Cold War. Did Border Patrol, was in the desert, did humanitarian for Katrina. So it was a very, I would say, nice career for me. But I do have a coin for you from our group, if you'd let me come up and give it to you. So thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate it. Thank you for being here tonight to do the pledge for us and for your service. At this time, I will now call the meeting to order. Are there any deletions on items on tonight's agenda? Hearing none, a copy of the minutes from the council meeting on January 2nd, 2024, and council work session on January 16th, 2024 are provided in your packet. Are there any admissions, additions, or corrections? I do know that, I think it was on the work session, where there was five in favor and two opposed. Normally, we put the names of who was what. Yes. It's just normally in there for easy-to-find later date.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Can I just say, I really appreciate that we're reviewing minutes from just the last few meetings. It's great work staying on top of that.
So do I have a motion for approval of the minutes?
So moved.
Councilmember Laow makes the motion.
Subject to the additions.
And do I hear a second?
Second.
Councilmember Williams, or Mayor Protem Williams, second. Is there any discussion besides what was already shared? Hearing none, all those in favor, raise your right hand. And it is unanimous. Our only presentation tonight is from George Perry from Knights of Columbus.
Yes, ma'am.
Looks like it's more than just George.
I brought my bodyguard with me. We're members of the Knights of Columbus, fourth degree, and our goal is patriotism. And we travel around looking at different flags that are up. And we don't have to go far this time because your flag out here is awesome. It's the best flag display that I've seen. We'd like to present you with this award, Knights of Columbus Patriotic Flag Award, Town of Lexington, presented by myself, the Assembly 2655, Knights of Columbus, State of South Carolina.
Well, come down again.
Go that way, chair's blocking it. The chair's blocking, you might want to go that way just to be easier.
Yeah.
They send them in different ways.
You know how to do it. Room down the hall.
Oh, my, get it in?
Oh, someone's going to take.
I don't know. Oh, yes. Where's your, where's your?
I'll go to the left.
I'm going to tie him.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
We also do awards for law enforcement and military, and firemen and paramedics, and we'll be working on a few of those now. But thank you for your time.
Actually, we probably should have given this to the staff because they're the ones that do the great job out here of keeping the slack.
You guys do a wonderful job.
Yeah, thank you. And by the way, your city is beautiful. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, gentlemen, very much.
It's my opinion, I couldn't be wrong.
Secrets out.
Next up, we have the vision plan update. And unfortunately, it's not very much yet tonight. Due to all the rain and the cold and the messiness that we've had going on, the progress has slowed on the Virginia Hilton Park and the Old Millsum. However, work is expected to pick up as spring approaches. And to see the latest on all the vision plan projects, visit lexsc.com. And next, we will have a traffic update from Mayor Protem Williams.
Thank you, Mayor. The Town of Lexington transportation crew has completed the work at Whiteford Way intersection with Sunset Boulevard. It has got to be one of the fastest traffic projects we've been able to get done. There are now three exiting lanes from Whiteford, which will improve greatly the operational efficiencies at this location. Crews will repaint the striping Tuesday night around 8:00 PM. So plan on a little delays if you're out Tuesday night around 8:00 PM and go by that area. Paving work has completed at the intersection of Thompson Street and Hendrick Street as part of the project that Palmetto Renovations Development did. There will also be a lane closure on East Main Street at Martell's Drive to remove the broken utility pole that we've been waiting a long time to get down. About a year and a half. That'll happen sometime Wednesday between 9:00 and 2:00. We're not sure exactly when they're going to show up and do the work because the utility company's doing that. But it will be done if nothing goes wrong on Wednesday. A lane closure is also planned at 607 Columbia Avenue at Vivid Church, right there at the triangle, this coming Friday to repair the broken catch basin that's there. We encourage you to follow the town's social media pages for traffic alerts and updates. Please call 803-358-7273 to report any traffic signal issue, unsafe roadway condition, or a pothole that needs repair. That's all.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Next up, we'll start with our first item of new business is the adoption of emergency ordinance for Maiden Lane wastewater services is from Mayor Protem Ron Williams.
Well, it wakes back up. Here we go. Okay. Section 5-7-250 of the South Carolina Code of Laws empowers council to enact by two-thirds vote of members present emergency ordinances affecting life, health, or safety of its citizens. The town is aware of a sewer line break located at 117 and 1/2 East Main Street and has taken remedial measures to prevent spillage in the area. The remedial measures are only a temporary solution, and the permanent solution is significantly delayed due to steps required to obtain an easement. The extended delay unnecessarily risks significant and potential hazardous conditions due to the nature of the temporary remedial measures, particularly during heavy storm events. Accordingly, the town wishes to protect the public welfare and resources by seeking to implement a permanent solution under an emergency authority. Make a motion to adopt an emergency ordinance to address the sewer line repairs that is attached.
Councilman Williams, Protem makes a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Councilman Laow, second. Is there any discussion on this?
No discussion, Mayor, but I think we should tell everybody that significantly more communication should be forthcoming in a matter of days. And hopefully, we can provide them more information about permanent solutions.
Thank you, Councilman Carnes. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, raise your right hand. And it is unanimous. Our next item of new business is the first reading of an ordinance annex in Lexington County map 4317-09-006, located at 315 Reed Avenue from Councilmember Todd Laow.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. John Bone owns approximately 0.35 acres located at 315 Reed Avenue and has petitioned to annex the property. Single-family home is currently located on this property. Properties in town near this one are zone-protected residential, and Reed Avenue is classified as a local road. Planning Commission reviewed this annexation during their past January meeting and recommended the same zoning and road classification for this parcel. So Madam Mayor, I'd make a motion for first reading approval of the annexation of parcel 4317-09-006.
Councilmember Laow makes a motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Mayor Protem Williams, second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, raise your right hand, please. And it is unanimous. Our next item of new business is the first reading of an ordinance to rezone 329-337 Railroad Avenue is from Councilmember Todd Carnes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ms. Linda Thomas owns a single parcel located in 300 block of Railroad Avenue. Three single-family homes and one mobile home are located on the property. Ms. Thomas is requesting to rezone the property from Protected Residential to Protected Residential 2 to allow the property to be subdivided into four separate lots that conform to the zoning classification of the property. Properties in the immediate area of this one are Zone Protected Residential, High Density Residential, and Limited Commercial. The Planning Commission reviewed this request during their January meeting and recommended against rezoning the property. So, Madam Mayor, I will put the motion on the floor that the action requested is a first reading to rezone the parcel from Protected Residential to Protected Residential 2 for the council to vote.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
So there's a second. John, can you tell us why they denied it?
I would, if I could, speak to it as well.
This is an interesting situation. The Thomas family has, like the write-up says, there's three houses and a mobile home on one parcel that were moved there 30 years ago, 40 years ago. They've asked to subdivide the property into four lots. Problem is, the property is zone-protected residential right now, and the proposed subdivision does not meet the side yard setbacks for Protected Residential. And the two center lots are not sized properly for Protected Residential. So they took it to the Board of Zoning Appeals and requested a variance. And the Board of Zoning Fields referred it to the Planning Commission because the two variances that they need are essentially what differentiate Protected Residential 1 from Protected Residential 2. Size of the setbacks, size of the lot. Went to the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission was concerned about recommending in favor of Protected Residential 1 because it would be kind of, I mean, in favor of Protected Residential 2, which would make the lots compliant because of, it's kind of a little bit of spot zoning. Be Protected Residential 2 right in the middle of a bunch of other different types of zoning classifications. But I think more importantly, what they were concerned about is if you zone it Protected Residential 2, what's to say those houses are removed? And, you know, you could then potentially sell the property to a developer that wants to do townhomes or patio homes, something more high, with a higher density. So they felt like it was not appropriate to solve this problem with the rezoning. It is scheduled to go back to the Board of Zoning Appeals on Thursday.
John, there was a question about was each house on its own septic system? And was the septic systems defined within the property limits of the, you're going to cut it into four pieces? Was each four pieces had its own septic tank field and septic tank?
We've been told that is true, but we don't have anything to verify that. We haven't asked for anything, but we don't have anything in the file to verify that. Could we require de-hack permitting on septics before we make a decision?
You could defer this until next month if you wanted to.
To Councilman Williams' point, if they are able to go through de-hack and get four approved drain fields based on the soil type and number of bathrooms, that would, that would, uh, that would resolve that issue.
But does it?
To be clear, there are, the septic system is there of some sort. The town doesn't know what it is, and neither did the committee or the commission. So that's why they pushed back. I mean, I will, I'd like to make a motion that we table it. If the folks are willing to go to de-hack and get us some proof of where those septic tanks are and that they are, in fact, on each individual lot and not co-mingling on the lots.
But it still doesn't change the fact that it would be the high-density development right there with PR1?
It does not change that, but I, you know, I'm not willing to consider it until we at least had that proof.
I think you have a lot of things that are grandfathered in right now that you can avoid continuing to grandfather in if you give them individual parcels. Is that not right? John? I know the side setbacks aren't standard, but right now you have four individual buildings on a single parcel.
Yeah, it's already non-conforming.
Correct. So right now, you can't convey any portion of it. It's an all or none.
It's all or none, yes. We were presented with a plat that's in your, in your packet that we were unable to approve because it's non-conforming.
Correct. What do you think? What do you recommend? Well, I think I'd have to go with the Planning Commission. I mean, it was a unanimous decision to recommend against it.
So, do you think they're gonna meet the criteria of the BZA instead of getting a rezoning to get a variance for the setbacks? Do you think they have a chance of meeting those four standards since it's grandfathered in?
That's gonna be a difficult issue, too. We started with that board initially because we thought that was the quicker, easier issue to address. It wasn't until we, until I, actually, until I started doing the write-up for the Board of Zoning Appeals, I realized it was more than one issue. It wasn't just the side yard setbacks. Those two center lots aren't big enough to meet PR requirements either.
So, but did I understand right that BZA didn't rule on it? They just kicked it?
They tabled it and referred it to the Planning Commission.
So, it seems to me like that would be, I mean, I would think the easiest way to handle a non-conforming property like that would be to get specific variances, and that would preclude some kind of weird PR Two thing popping in there later on. And I would, I would think treating the mobile homes separately, seems like that, that's point two six acres, just kind of pulling that out. It seems kind of muddy the waters. The others are stick-built. Is that mobile home, is that thing de-titled and tied to the ground, or is it truly mobile?
The applicants have told me that they could move that, but that, I mean, that lot's not the issue. I don't believe the, I don't think the mobile home is too close to the property line.
Right, yeah. The mobile home looks like it could be conforming, and if you guys, if y'all?
Well, you could move that a foot and a half.
Right, yeah.
And then?
We're gonna let, we're gonna let you speak, ma'am. Ma'am? We're gonna let you speak in a minute, yeah. Yeah, we'll let you speak in a minute. Yes, ma'am, yes. It's your property. We'll, we'll give you a voice. So, so our options are go back to BZA and see what BZA says, or they just remain grandfathered, but they can't, they can only convey the property as a whole, and they can never really subdivide it. Is that my understanding? Am I missing anything else?
I, yes, I made the suggestion that if you took one of the houses out, you could make it compliant, but then you'd only have three lots, not four.
Yeah. Can we ask Madam Mayor if these homeowners would like to speak to us? Thank you, John.
Can you give us your address? Name and address?
I'm hearing impaired, so if you'll bear with me.
Yes, ma'am.
First of all, I wanted to say something. I think I heard you talking about the septic tanks.
Will you give us your name and your address so they could record that?
I'm sorry, Linda Thomas, three thirty-two Railroad Avenue, Lexington.
Thank you.
Thank you. The, I went back and tried to find those permits myself, and I even went to DHEC, and they said that they were so old that they, prior to oh nine, I believe it was, that they were, they were not on record, and there was no way for me to get a copy of that record. However, when they were put in, they were put in by a licensed contractor, Sharp Septic Tank. Mr. Sharp is now deceased, and of course, his son does not have current records, but they were put in according to Lexington County Code. All of these houses were put in according to Lexington County Code. There's permits been pulled on everything that was put in. And what was the question about the mobile home?
No, I was just, I was just asking if it should be treated separately since the others are actually stick-built, and I was asking, is it de-titled?
Yes.
It is de-titled, okay.
We put that in according to code.
Okay. So, so, I mean, just looking at this, like, I mean, they got six-foot side yard setbacks, and we've got houses all over this town that's got five-foot side yard setbacks that are PR Two, I mean, hundreds and hundreds of them. So, ideally, this would go through BZA, and BZA would legitimize this because these people built this, when they built this at the time, they built it, presumably, they built it according to specifications at that time.
For Lexington County.
So, it doesn't seem very equitable not to provide them some remedy to actually subdivide it up, but not rezone it to PR Two so that anything within PR Two could go in there. Thank you, ma'am. Unless anybody's got any questions, I just don't know.
We would like to retire and make these homes available to small families, and instead of a, somebody's gonna come in and buy all three of them at one time, leave them as rentals as bad landlords.
But your intent is to subdivide them and sell them individually, or subdivide them and rent them individually?
Sell them individually.
Okay.
And hopefully bring in the town money and beautify them.
Thank you.
We plan on fixing them up no matter what happens.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
And we appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Mayor.
May he, may my husband speak?
Can she stay up here? I'm hearing impaired.
Yes, sir.
David Thomas.
David Thomas, same address. All right, I haven't really understood everything that's going on. I turn my hearing, and it's wide open, and I'm hearing things that I don't want to hear and then things I do want to hear.
Yes, sir.
This, this is what puzzled me about the whole situation. When we, when we moved the houses in, all of them were relocated, and in fact, two of them were right where we're standing. She says not to tell them that, but anyway, and we moved them out there. We were in the county, and we were, it was zoned, multi-house and eight units at an acre. And in two thousand and two, when we got houses in place, they said, well, you gotta have city order, you can't operate off a well. You get city order, we're gonna annex you. And suddenly, we became RL Four. This was in two thousand and two. I had copies of it made, but I left them at home. I'm sorry. All right, and in two thousand and nine, the same property became PR. It was all grandfathered in, and the mobile home's been there the whole time, and now we're simply requesting for it to be zoned to a situation so we can subdivide them, sell them. If we sell them as, and I know you're not interested in about selling, but if we sell them as to an investor, they're gonna stay just like they are. If we renovate them, we're gonna add four nice-looking homes across the street. We just did one up the street that we owned, two, three thirty, three fifty-one. And so, what I feel like is, we've done a number of homes about over the city. Everybody here, I know you're not here for the money, not just the money. You want, you want the town to look better, you want Lexington to look like a town, and it is a beautiful town. We don't live in the town. We live right across the street. If you have a copy, you know, we're in the county, we own three, you know, three properties right across the street, and I'd like to be in the town, but it's, it's just not that simple. I had talked with John about going ahead and including us because I'd like to be part of Lexington County. I just, you know, I'm in town of Lexington, and the other thing, the other thing is, I'm eighty-two years old. I'm ready to retire, and if I can get this property rezoned and get it sold, then maybe I can take, take a few years off. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you. Mayor.
Do you have any other questions?
No, ma'am. John, Ms. Hanson, can you come back up real quick? Is there any way for staff to find out for us about the septic systems? Because my concern is if we break these into four, and for some reason, one of these houses is sharing a septic that's on another piece of property, are we creating a mess for somebody to inherit unknowingly?
We can certainly do some more inquiries, but I don't, you know, they don't have the records. I don't know what DHEC may or may not have, so.
So, should we defer this to, it goes back to?
Sounds to me like that's what, maybe that's what you need to do.
Maybe, yeah. I'll make a motion.
Go ahead.
I was just wondering, I mean, I think everybody agrees the right thing to do is figure out a way to separate these out, or maybe that's the biggest option, to try to separate these out without rezoning it to PR Two. Is there any ability for council by ordinance to handle something like this separately?
I don't.
You have to ask your attorney at that point. I don't think so.
I'm just, I'm just looking at the scenario going, the man built these houses according to code, and he got forcibly annexed into town, and he's caught between a rock and a hard place. Like, we owe him some relief. We just gotta figure out the way to give him relief without, without setting ourselves up for failure thirty, forty years from now. I was just curious about that. So, maybe it goes, maybe it goes to BZA, and then if we, if it doesn't have a positive result in BZA, then maybe we could explore other alternatives?
I would suggest you table it until we find that out.
Perfect.
Based on that comment by staff, I'll make a motion to table this until after BZA.
Do I hear second?
Second.
Councilman Lyles, second. Any other discussion? All those in favor of tabling it, raise your right hand, and it is unanimous. Our next item of new business is first reading of an ordinance annex in Lexington County tax map, five four nine eight dash oh five dash oh four five, located in the one hundred block of Industrial Drive, is from Councilmember Gavin Smith.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I hope I pronounced this correctly. I believe it's Salacia Construction LLC owns three point zero seven acres located in the one hundred block of Industrial Drive and has petitioned to annex the property. A small medical device manufacturing company is being planned on the site. Properties in the town near this one are zoned industrial. Industrial Drive and Interstate Twenty are both classified as arterial roads. The Planning Commission reviewed this annexation during their January meeting and recommended the same zoning and road classification for this parcel. All that said, I make a motion for first reading approval.
Councilmember Smith makes the motion. Do I hear second?
Second.
Councilmember Carnes makes the second. Is there any discussion?
Who's coming to town? Jack, do we know? Anonymous is coming to town. Perfect.
Hearing, no more discussion. All those in favor, raise your right hand, and it is unanimous. Our next item of new business is the first reading of an ordinance to enter into mutual aid agreements with the Lexington Police Department and thirty-nine respective entities is from Councilmember Will Allen.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. To enter into mutual aid agreements, or MOUs, with Lexington Police Department and thirty-nine respective entities, and I think we needed to add one more to this.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. I have a note from the chief and a text from the major. We also need to include Midlands Tech. It's gotta come back so we can add it for the second, second reading.
Okay. So, with all that being said, I move for first reading approval.
Councilmember Allen makes a motion. Do I hear second?
I'll second it.
Councilmember Smith, second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, raise your right hand, and it is unanimous. Our next item of new business is the Utilities Terms of Service Agreement is from Councilmember Jenny Michaels.
The Utilities application does not contain language requiring the account holder to grant the town access to the property for purposes of maintenance and operation of the system. There are ordinances that address the issue for properties that are inside the town limits, but the issue is not so clear when dealing with out-of-town properties. Town council may wish to add language to the Terms of Service Agreement whereby the applicant agrees to allow access to the property for maintenance and operation purposes. This could serve to alleviate the problem on future accounts. The application is attached, as well as the suggested revisions. The additional language is underlined. I would like to make a motion for approval to add access language to Utilities application as recommended and written.
Councilmember Michaels makes a motion. Do I hear second?
I'll second.
Mayor Protem Williams seconded the motion. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, raise your right hand, and it is unanimous. Our next item of new business is appointments to boards and committees is from Mayor Protem Ron Williams.
Thank you, Mayor. We have received an application for an appointment to the town of Lexington committees and boards. The following were submitted. Board of Appearance Committee was Amelia Pakta. Historic Preservation Review Committee was Lori Horton-Kerry. Planning Commission was Betsy McCall. Build, build, excuse me, Board of Zoning Appeals is Dawn Weatherly, and Traffic Committee will be Brian Maddox. I'd like to make a motion to appoint each of these individuals to their respective committees.
I'll second it.
Council, I mean, Mayor Protem Williams makes the motion. Councilmember Smith seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, raise your right hand, and it is unanimous. Our last item of new business is the liaison appointments to the Joint Water and Sewer Commission and the Central Midlands Council of Government, and it is from Councilmember Todd Lyles.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Following a town election, council reviews council board member appointments for two-year terms. Listed below are the proposed council member appointments to the two boards, with Joint Water and Sewer Commission, the appointment being to Hazel Livingston with an alternate to Ron Williams. Central Midlands Council of Government Board being appointed to Todd Carnes. Also, Madam Mayor, this is worth noting, but about twenty nineteen or twenty twenty, this council chose to vote and remove the liaisons from the other committees or councils or commissions, excuse me, and so this is intentionally blank because we're gonna continue to affirm that we think it's best for the hierarchy of liaisons to be answering to all of us equally, so there is no hierarchy, but more importantly, all council members are encouraged to be engaged and involved in any and all of the different committees and boards. And so, with that, I would move for improvement, approving these appointments.
Councilmember Lyles makes a motion. Do I hear second?
Second.
Councilmember Michaels makes a, second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand, and it is unanimous. Are there any announcements from anyone tonight on council? If not, I know that council spoke and told staff that they wanted to know what our citizens wanted in communication, and they have come back and they have a twenty twenty-four communication survey that they want to, we want to hear from you. The town of Lexington is conducting a communication survey. Your input is vital in helping us enhance communication and better serve the needs of our community. We ask that you please take a few minutes to share your thoughts and preferences as it pertains to communications here at the town. The survey will be posted across town social media accounts and on our website and delivered via email to any town utility customers. This survey will begin Tuesday, January the thirtieth, and run through Sunday, February the eleventh, and I encourage all of the fellow council members to share it in your neighborhood pages and anywhere else that you'd like to see it shared, and try to get as many people to fill it out as possible. But that was one of the things that was on our top list of priorities, and they're already working on it so they can gather all that detail and then see the different avenues to go and the costs with each one of those avenues, and bring that back for us so we'll have it for the budget and the process moving forward. So, they're on it. Thank you, thank you, Jack, thank you, your team, Lauren, thank y'all all. Rachel, thank y'all so much for getting this together and moving fast to get this done. Any questions from the news media? I don't see any. Do we hear any? any? Any questions from the public regarding tonight's agenda? Not. That concludes our business for this evening. Thank you for watching the town council meeting for the town of Lexington. This meeting was held at Town Hall on Monday evening, January twenty ninth, twenty twenty-four. A recording of this meeting will be available for viewing on the town's YouTube channel. Without objection, we are adjourned.